...by North Cleveland Baptist Church, adult minister Mark Starr. Pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Scott Gilbert. Please stand.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, Lord, you tell us in Psalm one thirty-three, one, how good and pleasant it is when God's people live together in unity. So we come before you today with grateful hearts and thank you for the people you've given the opportunity to serve this community. Lord, we thank you for the blessings you've poured out on our county, its people, its resources, and the opportunities we have to make a difference in the lives of others. Lord, we ask you for your wisdom and your guidance in this meeting. Give the commissioners clarity of mind and unity of purpose. Help us to treat one another with respect, to listen with understanding, and to make decisions that honor you and benefit all who call this place home. Bless our citizens, our first responders, our schools, and every family represented here. Protect our county and help our representatives to be faithful stewards of the responsibilities that you've given to them. May everything said and done here today bring glory to your name, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We'll now have the roll call.
Blake.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Goins.
Here.
Slater. Mason.
Here.
Ledford.
Here.
Rogers. Winters.
Here.
Beatty.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Alford.
Here.
Cry.
Here.
That's twelve present and none absent, two absent, I'm sorry. Two absent.
Entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes. Goins on the motion, Hughes on the second. Call the roll, please.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
It's twelve in favor and none opposed and two absent.
We'll now go to the mayor for the report from the mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. You have a list of Stormwater Advisory Committee that it's time to reappoint. Those are two-year terms. I respectfully ask for your confirmation, please, sir.
Commissioner Hughes on the motion to have a second. Commissioner Beatty on the second. Open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
That's twelve in favor and none opposed and two absent.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I just want to remind everyone that opening enrollment is scheduled for this week, Wednesday through Friday, at various times and various locations. And I strongly encourage everyone, all employees, to attend one of the meetings to learn more about the options. A lot of times you may not have the best option for your particular situation, so we encourage everyone to go to one of those meetings if they possibly can. That's all I have unless someone has something for me. I believe everything else is on the agenda. Thank you.
Anyone have any comments for the mayor? Question? Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a... Second, Goins. Open for discussion.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes.
Have a question for finance. My, all this school board increases. That's being looked at and all good to go and all that good stuff. Seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Those are grants.
Just asking.
You get the... You got the answer? Okay. Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Twelve in favor and none opposed and two absent.
We'll now move along to reports from the committees and our districts. We'll start on our left with Commissioner Winters.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Seventh district's doing very well. Thank you.
Commissioner Ledford.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. All's well in the sixth. Thank you.
Commissioner Goins.
This district's doing well. Nothing to report. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson.
Nothing to report. What did you say?
Commissioner Gilbert.
All's well in the fourth.
Commissioner Mason.
Mr. Chairman, I got just a little bit here. I pulled the agenda, item A on today's agenda, and add to December the first agenda. Bradley County has prepared the required documentation to grant this request. However, we are awaiting a response from Republic regarding the property they leased from the county that would be affected by this proposed easement. Postponing this vote until December the first will allow them the ample time to fully discuss the issue and provide a response to Bradley County. And the only other thing I have today is Saturday night, I witnessed a horrendous crash in my cattle field on Spring Place. I think it was three young men, probably in the teens, not sure if from Bradley High School, Walker Valley, if they were graduating. I'm not sure about all the details. One boy lost his life and the other two, life force, they set down two helicopters. When you see two helicopters come in right beside your house, it's very, very concerning. Just thanks for the response for life force and all of our first responders, THP, all those guys, rescue, fire, EMS, everybody was there on the scene, and I appreciate them for such a quick response. Just prayers for the families. Thank you. That's all I have, Chairman.
Commissioner Collins.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just a calendar update. Legal and Legislative Committee will meet on Tuesday, December the second, in the commission room. That will take place at eleven thirty. That's all I have, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just one quick thing, if I will. Like you and everyone, I read in the media, and if I understand correctly, the city has completed the annexation and rezoning of Hardwood Farms' property. As you know, this is a big step forward, and it gives us a solid foundation to build on. And I think it's worth pausing to recognize the progress that's been made. Also, at our recent ad hoc committee chaired by Commissioner Alford, the idea of using tax increment financing, TIF, district came up as one of the possible ways to fund replacing the softball and baseball fields with turf. TIF can sometimes help cover infrastructure and development costs, but I think it's important that we take our time with this one. We'll want to look closely at both the potential benefits and the long-term commitments before deciding if it's the right fit for Hardwood Farms and the ballparks. I reached out to C Task, and they sent me some documents that I'm going over and started reading. I'll send them over to Lori, and she can send them out to everybody. So you'll have these documents that C Task explains what TIFs are, all the kind of stuff there. That way we'll have a starting point on the conversation. But, Mr. Chairman, in short, annexation and rezoning have cleared the way for the development, but the funding strategy like TIF deserves a careful look. My hope is that we move forward thoroughly, guided not just by technical details, but also by what's best for our community. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Alford.
Yes. Second district doing well. I got a couple announcements. Ms. Chairman, the Law Enforcement Committee meeting will be Friday, November twenty-one, here in the commission room at eleven AM. Also, Mr. Blake has mentioned the TIF and so forth. We did discuss that in the ad hoc committee meeting the other day, and we've asked Mr. Lockhart to, Andy, to come back, give us some estimates on the turfing the infield for the different ballfields and so forth. So at this point in time, I'm waiting on him to get back with us and give us some estimates on the pricing. And then after we look at that, I think we need to, like Mr. Blake said, we need to look carefully at this TIF and also other ways of financing the possibility of turf in those particular fields. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes.
Ms. Chairman, just a reminder, the fire committee will meet tomorrow here in the commission room at noon. I have nothing else to report.
Commissioner Beatty.
I really don't have nothing to report. Everything looks swell.
Thank you.
Our district.
We'll move down to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for the approval? Commissioner... Commissioner Winters on the... Commissioner Hughes. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
So this... That's pulling item A, correct? All right. Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
It's twelve in favor and none opposed and two absent.
Thank you. Agenda item A has been pulled. Agenda item B, Commissioner Thompson.
Ms. Chairman, a resolution authorizing the Bradley County Mayor to execute a lease agreement with the City of Cleveland to lease the parking lot located at ninety-five Church Street for a period of fifteen years in exchange for the City of Cleveland providing construction services to Bradley County at the property located at three sixty-five minutes road. I put that in form of a motion.
Goins on the second. Open for discussion. Call the roll, please. I'm sorry, I missed.
Just a question, Mayor. You talk with the city on this. Are they going to do the whole bank all the way back to the property line? Is that what's in the agenda form?
Yeah, the lease agreement has that spelled out pretty well. They will go back to the property line, like you all originally, some of you wanted to do, and slope it. It'll be sloped to the property line of the bank behind the new building. In other words, when they finish their dirt work at that building that we're building, that lot, they will go on to the property line, slope it to the property line.
Just behind the new building, though?
Right. Yeah, they're not...
Not going to get over there behind the other building? The original building?
No, but they will take that project and go all the way to the property line, and then the concrete will go over to that slope.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Gilbert.
So it's not going to go back and be more parking? It's just going to slope up?
No, there will be more flat land. It's probably thirty feet, I'm looking at crystal, probably thirty feet to the property line. The last ten feet probably will be sloped, so you're gaining probably twenty feet. So it'll be flat another roughly twenty feet, and then slope to the line.
And if you look at your resolution, the language, the fourth whereas down describes the construction services, and that is taken directly from the lease agreement. So that is what they're agreeing to do. If you look at that fourth whereas on page thirty of your packet in the resolution, that's what they have agreed, or if we assign this, what they've agreed to do.
It's our intention that they're doing exactly what you all, some of you were wanting to do originally, but it is just behind the new project because they're not touching anything other than that project.
Anyone else? Call the roll, please.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
It's twelve in favor and none opposed and two absent.
Thank you. Agenda item C, Commissioner Collins.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This is a resolution to rezone from R-one Rural Residential District to C-two General Commercial District, property located at Georgetown Road and identified by Tax Map zero-two-six-G, Group C, Parcel zero-zero-one and zero-zero-two. These can be found on pages thirty-two and thirty-three. This passed unanimously by the planning commission. I put that in the form of a motion.
We will now enter into a public hearing regarding the rezoning request. When you're recognized, please keep your remarks germane to the resolution at hand. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against the request? Anyone that would like to speak for or against? The public hearing is now closed. If there is no further discussion... I need a second on this. Commissioner Thompson on the second. We're now open for discussion on the commission. Want to have any?
Just, I care, what are they planning on doing with that property? You know?
Bentley, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's a ice maker. An ice machine or vending, ice vending.
Mr. Gilbert.
Is it on sixty? So it's dead on sixty? Not in that subdivision?
Okay.
Commissioner Hughes.
Ms. Chairman, if you look at the map that they're showing, it's not... It is on sixty, but it's also part of that neighborhood. But the question I have is, I live out that way, and I drive down that road where it has a slope that looks like a driveway going into it. It's still part of the two-way as you're going down to the bottom of the hill or that mountain that's there. Is the... And maybe I should ask Bentley this. Are they planning on digging something out and putting it where people can pull off the lane to go in? Or are the only other option I see is coming off from Hopewell Place?
If you'll notice, there's a driveway there that T-Dot put in when they put the expansion through there.
Which I agree with you on that, but that's what I'm saying. It comes right out into the two-lane. It's before the four-lane starts. So it means whoever's coming down that hill, if you're just... And you know how they come down that hill. You live out that way also there. It's not like they're slowing down too quick because you're fifty-five and then forty-five. They're not slowing down too quick. And if somebody... My concern is if somebody's trying to turn in there with a camper or what have you, you know, somebody could have time to slow down to get in.
The access will be permitted by T-Dot.
Okay.
And with them putting the driveway in, I don't think they're going to have a problem with it. But I mean, I understand your concern.
That's the same sense. I don't know. I mean, if you look at this area, it's residential all around it. I don't know that they're planning on a business going in.
Well, when the widening came through, T-Dot took half of both of those lots that Mr. Fox owns now. There's no way there'll ever be houses on them because they don't perk and never will perk. So, I mean, this would be the highest and best use of the property.
The only other choice would be the city that's not far from it would be to run sewer to it, which would make it accessible to residents.
Yes. Sewer's pretty far from there, though.
I'm assuming it's Green City. But that's my thought. And, oh, my.
I did wait patiently for the sewer to come through because we saw this going through. And, you know, we came and asked the questions, and they said that the sewer was overcapacitated at the school there, that extending it down to save that property for any future uses would be nil and void, basically. So, and there is a... You guys would like to see this. There already is... T-Dot paved like, I don't know, probably another eight or ten feet of roadside access to this access. You know, when they... So it's not like a two-foot apron. There is access there. And I also did get shots of this line site because when the... Originally, the road was very dipped there. And when they did this from Hopewell Place, is that... Right there in that subdivision, they elevated the road probably, if I'm guessing, fifteen feet, fifteen to twenty feet. So the line site... I tried to get this done before the construction, and I've waited patiently and paid my taxes and, you know, done my thing. And then seeing how much the state was going to take from us, it's left the... Basically, it's left me without usage except for something like this. And when T-Dot was there, they graciously paved this giant access, you know, to make it to their recommendations. So...
I think for some reason I was thinking that that started right after that, where it was widened out.
Yeah, they did work. The four-lane does, it's all happening in that vicinity. Are you with me? But they did elevate. The line site before was bad. It was...
Which I'm not too concerned.
It was real steep, but it's no Jackie Evans.
I'm not concerned about so much of the northern coming south on it. I'm thinking more of when somebody's coming down the mountain and if they're just not looking. And I mean, I've had...
That's what I'm saying. That's the line site stop there. You can't even see, the cars are so small in the distance that, you know, it isn't like it's a sudden encroachment anymore. If anybody wants to see this. I'm not trying to defend it, man. I'm just trying to, you know, I've been paying taxes on it now since 2011, and I've waited patiently, knowing that this road construction was going to come through with the anticipation, knowing that they were going to take the front. I didn't want to put any money into it until I knew what the construction would end up being. The promise was, and you guys know this, that immediately the next construction would start, but there was a limping in the construction process, and now the other side, the grant has been lost. So, you know, now I'm sitting...
How long have you owned the property? I don't really know how long it's gone.
Two thousand... I don't know. I think 2011.
Was it prior to the expansion being made or after?
It was all had been in... No, no. Way before. Way before. Years, ten, twelve years before. Yeah, but it was already in... In line, so I didn't... I tried to get it zoned. I own, my family and I own, or I do, and my daughter is now partial owner, affordable cabins and sheds. And I tried to just get it zoned to where I could have people visit right as, back then, I was going to build a nice home there and just allow a commercial access per se. We see about five people a month in the office. But to be able to put up a couple shed displays there and have that, and that was turned down. There was a big fuss about it, which I understood. That's why I backed off because the line site was a little more critical at that time. And I understood what it was. So, you know, again, just continue to pay my taxes. I knew this was coming through. The state, when they started talking to us, said that this was supposed to be a redundant process. So it was going to end there and then immediately start again. You probably know the details on it a little more than I do, y'all. But there is something where the grant got lost on the other side. So, you know.
And the other question I have is, if what I can understand, you're going to put like a building there that makes ice.
Twice the ice, yeah.
There's one just down the road from it, just north of it, where if this one goes in, or being just north of it. Do you own that one also, or is somebody else on that?
I don't. But it seems like it's a venue that's not being taken care of, and I'm willing to take the risk to put one in. You know, I've been in business for thirty-five years. I wouldn't invest money if I didn't think that it would be prosperous.
Which I think my only...
And I've already went through the state requirements of, you know, getting it surveyed under recommendation of the city. And I've already went through and lost divided lines. I've already went through... I've already went, I've already leaped all the processes that... So we're just waiting for this approval here.
I think my only other concern is the fact that it's... Even though it's the front of Georgetown, it is still part of a residential area there. And I can understand, I know that we have had some complaints from people that live in that subdivision about it being there. And I can understand, I respect that.
Well, everything else around it is commercial. I mean, the whole area has moved out commercial. We're only three lots away from another commercial building, which is a dentist or doctor's office. Something of that facility.
Veterinary, no. I know exactly what you're talking about. But like I said, that is still not part of this neighborhood either. This neighborhood is...
Well, I've offered the neighborhood to buy the property, and they've rejected. So, you know, I'm just, I've paid taxes and bought the property with facilitation to use it, and that has been the resistance. If they were that completely resistant against it, I would assume that they would pay money to make it a park for themselves or attach to, I offered to the neighbor to buy it with what I would consider one year's revenue, which I thought was more than generous, considering, you know, revenue could go on for years and years. And that was rejected. So I have, I've done my diligence on it. I just don't want to lose money, is what I'm saying.
Have any other questions to ask?
Commissioner... You through? Commissioner Gilbert.
I just one question. Are you going to put like a fence up around it? Privacy fence?
There's trees in place.
So there's trees that are blocking the...
Yeah, there's tree lines that I'll just let grow up. You know, they're actually, have advanced into the property. The adjacent property owner has decided to mow part of the property,
You through?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Hey, just one question. Are you going to put like a fence up around it, privacy fence?
There's, there's trees in place.
So there's trees.
Yeah, there's tree lines that I'll just let grow up. You know, they're actually, have advanced into the property. The adjacent property owner has decided to mow part of the property, which, you know, if you want to waste your blades, go ahead. I just, but there was a more thick resistance, you know, against the boundaries. And then I am going to try to, when the properties come up, to even give more of a buffer is, you know, the connecting property owners where they had to tear down the house there, I'll probably try to purchase that to give a little more of a buffer to the community.
And how did you say they voted on this, Denny? Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Yes.
I'm sure that if they zoning, there was no reason not to approve it. However, sometimes just because you can do something doesn't make it right. And I'll just leave it at that.
Any other comments?
The big property that's beside it on the, as you're coming off the hill there, what is that?
It's a, it's a drainage easement. I don't know, I don't know. It's owned by the state, right? Yeah, I don't, I've never, because it's, there's a big, I don't know, creek, I guess you'd say, some type of, you know, lower creek drain off easement there.
Commissioner Beatty.
When you brought the property, do you ever check to see if it perked then, when you bought the property?
No, I, I had intended to move there. It was the road construction that we heard about coming through that I didn't want to spend, you know, half a million dollars on a home to move there and with a garage.
So you don't know where it perked or not when you bought, first brought the property?
I had it perked now.
I'm talking about way, you know, a little year ago or how long it's been. You didn't have it perked then?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I'm under the assumption by the original, the perk test that we just did recently, if I would have had the adjacent property connecting, that it would have perked. It just doesn't have the space anymore.
Maybe it's a property they took, I mean, the road took, may, it may have perked, who knows?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I was in a, when we got it done this time, it just got too small and there's a drainage, there's, you know, all that stuff that's happening there. I sent, I asked Mark Boo to come out and take a look at it and he was like.
But you couldn't get T-Deck or them to buy the rest of the prop?
No. That's, they offered what they offered for the road frontage.
Okay.
Sir.
Commissioner Winters.
What, what was the vote of the committee? What did they vote?
It was unanimous approval.
Unanimous. Thank you.
No further discussion, call the roll, please.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
No.
Hughes.
No.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change their vote? It's ten in favor, two opposed and two absent.
Thank you. Yeah, please.
My name is Bill Sanders. I think I know most of you and I just wanted to state, and I know that you were developing a forty-plus acre site across from the county road department, and I just want to stress